May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowles?
Here.
Councilmember Big Stick?
Present.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Mayor Protam Beckmeyer?
Present.
Mayor Vaterlaus?
Here.
And as a reminder, please make sure you have a parking pass on your dashboard, and they are downstairs if you need one. Roll call, I already did. This meeting will be held in person with alternative methods to observe or participate as fully noted in the agenda. It's also broadcast on Comcast 26 livestream at cityofpacifica.org/livestream, or via Zoom at the link, or dial-in information noted in the agenda. I'll now read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatouche-Alone peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatouche-Alone peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth as the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions. The Ramatouche-Alone have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatouche-Alone peoples. And now I will lead the slide. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
No reportable action.
Thank you. Now we're on to the consent agenda. Items 1 through 11 are on the consent agenda. Does...do any council members wish to pull any items from consent?
I'd actually like to pull item 5.
Hold on, I need to make sure that... Do any other council members wish to pull any items? Are there...sorry. Any public comments on consent excluding the pulled item? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. And...oh, Emily? No one? Thank you. We'll close the public comment. And are there questions or comments on consent?
I have a couple of questions on item 2 on the minutes. One, we received a comment lender from Kimberly Finelli, who's in the audience wishing to make a correction to the minutes on her comment. I think that's on packet page 24. See, I don't have her exact comment in front of me, but...
Councilmember Bowles?
Uh-huh.
There should be a printed packet of public comments for you that you can reference.
Right, I know. I just haven't quite gotten to it. Oh, here it is. So, in quotation marks, she says that the city...she requests that the city do not hire a consultant that can provide a biased assessment of the route they need to take. I think the minutes say that she objected to hiring a non-biased assessment, but it's biased assessment, so maybe just striking the word "non" is all that it needs.
Just for clarification, the minutes state that she requests that they do not hire a consultant that can provide a non-biased assessment. You're asking to strike the "non" from...
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
And then, sorry, Sue, on packet page 31, just in my council communications, the second sentence says that I met with Marion Hinshaw about...from the PRC, but that should read Anita Reese.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion? Councilmember Big Stick?
I move we approve consent items 1 through 11 minus item number 5 with the amendments as stated to the minutes by Councilmember Bowles.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Okay, and I have a motion to approve consent calendar minus item 5 with number 2 as amended by Councilmember Big Stick and seconded by Mayor Protam Beckmeyer. And the vote passes unanimously.
Okay. Christine, item 5?
Yeah, I'll...I don't know if we need a staff presentation, maybe not on the item, but I noticed one error in the development fees that I have been discussing with the city manager and the city attorney this afternoon. So the housing and lieu fee is missing an amount of about $250,000. It is actually in that account, and it shows a balance of zero. And so my understanding is that we can still approve this today, but with a note that that item will be updated the next time we provide the development fee schedule. This has already been posted, and I think there's a deadline that's relatively soon, so there's not time to go back and fix it now.
And just for clarity, it's really an administrative error. It's not substantive. So, you know, that's why we don't need to correct the report. We can fix that administratively, and we will confirm it when our next report comes back on AB...for the AB 1600, which will be next year.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure it didn't get lost, because that's the money from the Harmony 1 and lieu fees. That's specifically for affordable housing, so I'm just making sure that that doesn't get lost. But, so, and then, I know we're not discussing review of the development fees right now, but what I'd like to say, and again, in my discussions with city manager Woodhouse today, that the practice of most cities is to review this every five to seven years. And we've reviewed a few things the last few years, like the parking and park fees, but not all the development fees. And as I was reading this agenda item, I actually got a little concerned, because I think, especially looking at our housing element and all the projects that are going to be coming down the road, we actually need a lot of money for road and infrastructure improvements and so forth, and just wanting to make sure that we're charging enough to keep up with the capacity of our infrastructure, our fire department needs, and so forth. For example, the Highway 1 improvement's the only thing that we're gathering money for, whereas for a trail improvement, but we know that we will be needing more major improvements to Highway 1 in the middle of town, you know, if all this housing is built. So I just want to bring that to the council's attention, because that'll be something that we may want to discuss, a goal setting of wanting to put on our agenda for next year before we get further behind. That's all. So otherwise, I've moved to approve consent item 5.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Please vote.
With item number 5 moved to approve by Councilmember Bowles and seconded by Councilmember Beer, the vote passes unanimously.
Thank you. And moving along, we are going to public comments. This portion is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided, however, that only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. Comments on non-agenda items must be...must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If comments do not address matters within the subject matter of the city, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction. If the warning is not followed, the mayor will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone, or she'll do it herself. Councilmembers shall not enter into a debate with the speakers under public comment on items not on the agenda. A maximum of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. And we will start off with Brian Raniers, followed by Doreen Cummins-Murphy and Bonnie O'Connor.
Hello, thank you. My name is Brian Ranero. Wanted to inform the council that you may be aware on December 14th, the California Coastal Commission had a meeting and heard a presentation by David Woxmith, a Canadian researcher of the relationship between STRs and affordable housing in the LA area, short-term rentals, that is. His study showed that there were correlated effects between the presence of unhosed STRs and a predictable increase in rents and housing prices in the communities which the STRs existed. Notably, Mr. Woxmith's report showed that unhosed STRs have no net benefits to the communities in they occur in, nor do they provide any benefits beyond which hosted STRs provide. Some of his suggestions to the California Coastal Commission were that hosted STRs are the only type of STRs that any community should allow in their ordinances. Second is that municipalities should seek support from higher authorities, and the Coastal Commission of California should respect and support communities restricting STRs in their ordinances. This is a new attitude from the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission considers the effect of unhosed STRs as working counter to their mandate to preserve affordable access to the coastal zone, and they are an ally in the work to regulate properly STRs. I would encourage the council, given this change...this new event, I would encourage the councillor, the council, to support a moratorium on unhosed STRs, new unhosed STRs, and ultimately ordinance to ban unhosed STRs in Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you. Doreen Cummins-Murphy, Bonnie...Bonnie O'Connor...Bonnie, sorry, Bonnie, and Jeff Gueye.
Hi, Happy New Year. I'm here for a really great reason. I want to thank the Director of Park, Beaches, and Recreation. I want to thank his team, the city public works, all of you, for a brand-new playground structure at Driftwood Circle at Saltire Park, just opened at the end of November. And now a new generation of children in our greater community will get to enjoy this. So thank you for a gorgeous new structure for safe, fun, and healthy outdoor play. Bob did a great job of communicating with my neighbors and letting us know the updates and asking for input, and it's just been a great communication. Christmas Eve, my sons, now ages 20 and 26, and all my nieces and nephews got to enjoy the playground with obstacle-race horses. And I also want to thank Mike Perez. I know he's retired, but I pestered him for three years to get a new playground. And so a thank you to the city, to staff, Sue, for listening all the time, and the Roy Davies Trust for continuing to support safe playgrounds and parks in Pacifica.
Thank you. Sorry, Bonnie, followed by Jeff, and then Caitlin Quinn.
Hi, Bonnie O'Connor. I am here for the similar reason as Doreen. I'm here to thank the city for a wonderful park in our neighborhood of the Saltire neighborhood. It is...I know there was some back and forth finding a design that was exciting to the neighborhood, and so I appreciate that staff worked with us to come to that consensus. And my kids have been out there several times and love it, so thank you so much. Appreciate it, and thank you to the city. While I have the mic, I also want to shine the light on the planning department. I don't think they ever get enough love, so... I know they are going above and beyond with all the work that they have on their plate with the housing element and the LCLUP, which I understand is being talked about tonight. None of it's easy. I appreciate their hard work and dedication, so that is it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jeff, followed by Caitlin, and then Cindy Abbott.
Hello, city council members. I'm Jeff Gueye, 30-plus-year resident of West Fairway Park. I have two points I'd like to make tonight. First, at the LCLUP Community Roundtable Meeting on December 5th, city staff gave incorrect information regarding roofing materials under the Coastal Commission plan. When I pointed it out at that meeting, staff adamantly refused to acknowledge or investigate the error. On December 6th, I submitted an email to council with proof of the incorrect information and asked that the city issue a public correction. To date, I have not received any response or action. This is one example of how council and staff do not understand the details of the Coastal Commission staff's rewrites. The devil is in the details. Roofing materials may not seem like a big deal, but it's an example of how one little thing that was missed can make a huge difference and impact on Pacifica residents. Replacing a roof is a common maintenance item that all homes and businesses will need to do at some point. No one should be required to get a deed restriction on their property to merely repair or replace their roof. It's just one example of how Coastal Commission is attempting to encourage blight and significantly reduce property values and rights so they can clear the coast, ultimately leading to managed retreat. Secondly, the idea that we need to negotiate from Coastal Commission staff's rewrite of the Pacifica 2020 LCLUP is wrong. We are negotiating against ourselves. The public and local government worked together over four years developing a thoughtful, workable LCLUP. We sent it to the Coastal Commission, who rejected it and rewrote their own version of it. Now this is supposed to be our new starting point? That's ridiculous. What was the point of those four years of public engagement? Council should reject Coastal Commission's changes, just like they rejected ours, and stand by our original 2020 LCLUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin, and then Cindy.
Good evening. I want to thank the city council for all of their hard work on the behalf of the residents here. We appreciate so much of what you do for us. I want to echo my fellow resident Brian Ranero's comments about the California Coastal Commission's sudden sea change, pardon the pun, on short-term rentals. This is a monumental moment, and one that Pacifica needs to leverage fully. The hundreds of unhosed STRs throughout Pacifica have taken away much-needed homes from the community and have altered the character of the many neighborhoods, especially those in West Shaw Park and Pedro Point for the worst. These are commercial operations with the sole goal of the commoditization of Pacifica's homes, and the only winner in this shameful game is the host, who is most often a corporation or individual with a portfolio of multiple STR properties. As an example of the rapaciousness of these hosts, note how they have continued to pack outsiders and tourists into properties all along Beach Boulevard, even while the area has been pummeled by ocean waves that have flooded streets, damaged properties, and injured people and animals. These unhosed STR hosts have chosen profit over safety and have flagrantly ignored the city's efforts to keep the area closed off to any except residents, Mayor Vaterlaus, Vaterlaus, and members of the city council. As you take on the important work related to the housing element and the local coastal plan, please do the right thing and have Pacifica join the many cities across the world, New York, Barcelona, Dublin, Toronto, that have banned unhosed STRs, recognizing and correcting this blight upon our city. The only STRs that should be allowed to operate in Pacifica are those which are hosted, wherein the homeowner resides in the home and is present during the guest stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy?
Hello, Happy 2024. And I'm going to continue on the theme of short-term rentals, and let's move forward, not only with our ordinance that we've been talking about for a while, but also making sure that this is an important part of our housing element. In that same presentation that was made by a researcher who's been looking at Airbnbs now for decades, short-term rentals, Airbnb being part of that, they've found and have documented that 20% of rental increases in the United States, and that applies equally in a lot of the different communities, have been due to the proliferation of short-term rentals. 20%. That's a pretty big number that people are doing for something that has been called the low-hanging fruit of being able to move forward with affordable housing, good governance. So I hope that this is a strategic part of our housing element, and that we also get to move forward with the update of the ordinance today. You know, we heard parks take a while. Everything takes a while in civic governments, I know that. I first came here and talked to you about short-term rentals in June of 2022, and it was last goal...and at that time, everybody thought that it was really important. And you put that on your list of goals, too. And the Planning Commission talked about how important it was, and also gave you a long list of things to update. The most important thing, though, is to no longer allow unhosed short-term rentals. It'll make a huge difference in our communities, in our neighborhoods, and the quality of life, giving us back actual neighbors. I've had an empty house across the street from me now for two years. It was a short-term rental for a while, now it just sits empty. That's the impact of an unhosed short-term rentals. Ghost housing that nobody can live in because somebody bought it for profit. So I hope that if you go to...I sent you an email about this as well, so I won't go into too much detail. And I also provided the timestamp on the Coastal Commission meeting so that you can hear it yourself and what the commissioners said. The Coastal Commissioners were so excited to receive this data, and they all spoke about how this is an immediate thing that can be done to take away this blight and this problem that's impacting affordable housing in the coastal zone in our cities. So I look forward to helping this move forward, because we'll be back, and we'll keep at it. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last card I have for public comment is Peter Garanani.
I echo my wife's thought on thanking all the hard-working council members and staff and all the work you do for the city. I walk my dogs every night through Sharp Park, and on average, on every single block, there's somebody living in a vehicle. There used to be a couple living in a two-door...a four-door red sedan. The man would sleep in a sleeping bag behind the steering wheel, his wife would sleep in the passenger seat of the sleeping bag. It's clear in front of our eyes there's a housing problem. When we moved to Pacifica seven years ago, our neighbors on the right were a retired couple who loved Pacifica so much, they used the downstairs for Airbnb. That was a hosted Airbnb. And on our left was a single mom with a couple of kids in high school and a professional woman who rented in the house. That dwelling served two families, a family of three and a family of one. Since that time, Beach Boulevard has become more than 50% unhosed STRs. And if you think about it, I'll pick just one example, on the corner at San Jose, there used to be an apartment building with three apartments. It's now three unhosed STRs. It could serve three families, potentially some of those people living in cars, or RVs, or camper vans. Affordable housing is a problem right in front of our eyes. There is an integral connection between unhosed STRs that are run as unregulated hotels and the problem of families trying to live in Pacifica, an affordable, nice family town. Interesting data point, while we're talking about that wonderful lady and the renter and her children, who used to live right next to us, when she put her house on the market, a corporation came in and paid $200,000 over asking price, which families can't compete with. And that corporation runs 19 properties, unhosed, unregulated hotels, we'll call them STRs, but that's what they really are, 19 properties in Pacifica. That's 19 families that could be housed, or in the case of that one house, where two families were housed. We got to get rid of unhosed STRs.
Thank you. That's the last yellow card I have. Is there anyone online? Seeing no one online, we'll close the public comment and come back for council communication. And if we could...we do have a lot of people here, so if we could try to make this shorter than usual.
I was going to ask that, if I might, Mayor. If we could...I realize it's a change now, and we can't make decisions on the fly, but I would like us to think about keeping our comments as brief as possible, and if we need time to share with each other as this time affords us that opportunity, that we move that to the end of the meeting. Because I don't want to miss important updates, but on the other hand, we have a full agenda, and we've had a few email requests this week to please move items around to acknowledge people that are coming to speak on items, so I'm just throwing that out since it's a new year in 2024 and all that.
And in the future, I'd like to bring that before council, that maybe we have council communications at the end of the meeting, always. Just a thought to think about ahead of time.
Thanks.
Okay. Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Mary?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. I really appreciate you being here and all the communication that we've received. I've...I took vacation, which was really needed, and so I was gone for the past couple weeks. But one thing I really want to do is acknowledge the tragedy that happened in my neighborhood in Valley Mar, where a young man was murdered. And I want to thank our first responders and our...my neighbors who came together and put together a vigil, which was beautiful. They put together a GoFundMe. There's been a lot of money raised for this family. You know, it's really shocking when something like that happens in our city and when it happens in your neighborhood. So I want to thank our chief of police. Mia, thank you so much for your response, not only to the event, but to us afterwards. I really appreciated what I learned from discussions with you, and really, that's all I wanted to say, and we just need to keep taking care of each other all the time. And I think our neighborhood really showed up, and it was beautiful, so.
Thank you. Christine?
I can go. I was gone, too, the whole...the whole three weeks. I was lucky to be in Australia, where my daughter is currently studying and where I used to live and work 33 years ago. And I haven't been back and celebrated my 60th birthday, so ready to start the new year and all the good work. One thing I do want to share is that the town I lived in, Manly, is a suburb of Sydney. It's right on the ocean. It's a big surfing town. And as I was there, and I was walking past the council chambers every day, I'm like, hmm, this might be a good sister city for us. So I did a little research and reached out to them, so I'll let you know. They're also struggling with a lot of the same issues we are with a lot of tourists and short-term rentals, and also erosion and, you know, buildings at risk, and so we might be able to learn from each other. It's a beautiful country. Highly recommend it.
Thank you. Thank you. Tiger?
Wanted to start just by saying Happy New Year to everyone. I know that Jack Burgett with the Water District isn't with us in the room, but I do believe he's watching online, so hello out there, Jack. Briefly, Ukraine, Israel, and Gaza is on my mind. And may peace prevail. So I attended a number of reorganizations over the course of the holidays and brought back some ideas from Burlingame, as per your suggestion. Mayor Protem, I can discuss some of those suggestions later. I've been doing some work with the Peninsula Division of Cal Cities through the Legislative Action Committee. And there will be more about that later. We'll have a night coming up, so you'll hear more about that later. Attended the One Shoreline, the Becker Zoom End of the Year Roundup. I think the one thing that I might actually go into, Peninsula Clean Energy had their last meeting of the year, and we discussed the end result of the Surplus Funds Committee, of which I was a member. Out of $68 million, we decided with surplus. The Carafara recipients, folks who needed help in general, received $300 rebates on their bill. After that, there was financing for residential storage and outages, additional loan funds for local government electrification programs, energy storage for public buildings, school electrification and storage incentives, emergency water heater replacement, the stuff that actually pertains to us. We allocate $11.5 million for member agency grants. Of that, I think we have about $200,000 or $300,000 to play with. So there'll be more to come for that later, but that is one I wanted to put on everyone's radar. There's also $15 million allocated for funding for local power projects and/or a microgrid or other form of advanced energy. So that's a big deal project that could happen. And nothing's been assigned, but I wanted to put that on everyone's radar also. Aside from that, met with a constituent after the King Tides. And on Friday, there's an episode of the mayor's office, the last one that I'll be hosting, but that's going to be introducing Mayor Vaterlaus as our mayor and turning the show over to her. So that'll be Friday night at 8:00. And it's a much, it's a good way to get to know our new mayor and maybe see her in ways you hadn't before if you've been following her for years. And that's the highlights.
Thank you for sharing the details later because I appreciate the effort that you spent going to all those reorgs. And we had an opportunity to chat a bit about it. So that, that'll be useful and beneficial to hear. And thank you also for the report on PCE because as soon as we got it from PCE, I sent off, I think I CC'd you. I sent off an email immediately to the city manager saying, what are we applying for with these grant funds? And I interpreted, I think correctly, member agency grants to be like cities that are part of PCE, right?
Basically, it's $11.5 million that'll be divided between the 20 agencies and the county in terms of the percentage of usage.
Oh, okay, so it's money. It's not apply for it and get some, it's get it.
Well, it's apply for it, there's, but there's very few strings attached. Let me put it to you that way. So we have to do it a certain way, but it's pretty much if we have a good project in mind, we're getting funding.
Undoubtedly, we have several.
Ah, yes.
Thank you. On my report, I'll keep it very brief. The, and I'll ask if I, there's anything important about Economic Development Committee that we need to bring up later. Let's remember it. I'm speaking to Councilmember Beer because at this moment, I'm drawing a complete blank, and I'll have to go back over my notes. Importantly, did hear, we heard from public comment a few different times and received a lot of email about short-term rentals. And I was at the Coastal Commission meeting on Thursday, December 14th, in Santa Cruz, and was able to hear that presentation in person, that portion of it which was given in person. Some of it was Zoom. And all of it, as we heard in public comment, is available through the Coastal Commission's website. And if you have five hours to go through it, I really recommend it. It was packed with information, very useful. And it was interesting. We saw it in March, when we were at the Coastal Commission meeting in Half Moon Bay. There was a very interesting change. And what was it that we heard, sea change? I agree that there is a very focused intentionality on the part of Coastal Commission regarding short-term rentals. They're changing their point of view. They used to see them as visitor-serving and a way to branch and broaden and make available on an affordable basis housing or, or short-term housing on the coast so that more people could enjoy and benefit from coastal access. They're learning it didn't quite work out that way. And there, there's data to back that up. So that's very useful and beneficial. I had a real enjoyable time at the Colma Last Council of Cities Dinner of the Year, the day after that. And then the week after that, had the opportunity for our first reignited or restarted Library Advisory Committee, which is really exciting, a lot of energy around that, and that was thrilling. And lastly, I'll say that there was an open house at Supervisor Mueller's office, which I was able to attend. And it ended up being a celebration of funding for farmworker housing. I had an opportunity to speak with Joaquin that day from Half Moon Bay City Council, outgoing mayor at the time, I think. No, incoming. He's incoming mayor. And he imparted to me some information that he gave to me, was personally, when COVID hit, he obtained a list of farmworkers' addresses and made calls on people individually. And there are many who live in Pacifica, in South San Francisco, in Daly City. So when we hear about farmworker housing and there's a big concentration and a focus on it in Half Moon Bay, I think it's important for us to keep in mind that our ag workers are everywhere in the county. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may very briefly.
Yes, Councilmember Big Stick.
I forgot to mention the One Day Homeless Count is coming up on January 25th. Briefly, I went through the training today, but if anyone has interest in volunteering for the One Day Homeless Count, this happens once every two years. It's the way we know approximately what our homeless count is for our city and thereby how we get funding through HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development from the federal. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. That was important. Council, Mayor Protem Beckmeyer and I met with Jack from the Water District yesterday. And we're sorry that he's not with us today, but it was a good conversation. We met with a group of constituents regarding the, the local coastal plan update. I also went to the Colma Creek meeting, which we have a minuscule amount of Colma Creek in Pacifica, but it's sometimes interesting and sometimes boring. The car cruise was really amazing. Just seeing all of those cars all lit up and decorated. And it's, it's a good event for our city. I did film with former Mayor Big Stick, and it's a little personal, but it was a good, a good thing.
You're going to hear the word cancer a lot.
And I've talked to lots of constituents. Mayor Protem and I did go out to the beach on the day of the King Tides. We were accused of not attending, but we did. And we talked to many, many people on that day out here about all kinds of different things, the seawall, the city hall, everything. And I would like to also agree with Mary Beer about our first responders, the police, the firemen, everyone involved in the tragedy whose lives are, continue to be in disarray. And thank you, everyone involved. And I'm done, so staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Vaterlaus and Mayor Protem Beckmeyer. Councilmembers, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. Just a couple brief communications. First, I did want to follow up regarding the high tide and large wave event on the 28th. On consent, just to draw it to everyone's attention, was the ratification of a declaration of local emergency related to that event because there was a great deal of damage done to the Beach Boulevard area, including a large breach in the seawall, which was repaired very quickly. And in, in talking about first responders and late-night work, Public Works is in that as well, related to the storm damage. Additionally, everyone has heard that the pier needs to be closed for three weeks for an expedited assessment to the, of the, about the damage that was caused to the pier. So in these situations where there's a lot of damage, a lot of work, a lot of repair to be done, assessment of what damage is, that's when it's appropriate to declare this kind of local emergency. And one of the benefits of that as well is just making us viable for state or federal funding should, should those declarations be made at those levels. So I wanted to call attention to that. But to say that, thank you for everyone's patience in the community because there's a lot of cleanup to do, as there was last year at this time. And so the crews are going to be working tirelessly, moving sand around and trying to repair what's necessary in this area. One of the points I will highlight, which is, if, if the listening audience could magnify this in the community, is that a very difficult situation for first responders in emergency situations is when, is when folks come to the scene of the disaster when they're not supposed to be there. And so we have police force out that is trying to take care of real emergencies and having to, you know, encourage people to leave an area that's dangerous. So I'd just like to reiterate that it's very important that people pay attention to signs that say, you know, you can't go drive down this road unless you're a resident here or if you're working in that area in response to the disaster. So that's, that is important. Another item that I want to do highlight is give a shout out to the Economic Development Program. I had updated the council prior to the holidays or over the holidays. I don't remember which it was. But the Economic Development Manager Tara Schiff and analyst Alyssa Beronte have been visiting businesses in town. And they've done, completed 88 visitations recently and to small businesses all around town and have gotten great response. And in many cases, brought and, and brought much information and resources to those businesses about whether it's grant resources or other that can help those businesses. So I wanted to give a shout out to them. And that program's going to continue in 2024. And we're going to look forward to coordinating some of the visits with, including council members in attendance. And so more to come on how we strategize that. And then I'll conclude by saying that it's now 2024 and I will be serving as the Chair of the San Mateo County City Managers Association for this year. We have our kickoff meeting this Thursday. So, so that'll be a, a great, a great year, I think, of lots of interesting information and dialogue between city managers in the county. I'm also the Chair this year of the Library JPA Operations Committee. And that's good timing related to our kickoff of the Library Advisory Committee and our library public outreach that we'll be doing this year. So I look forward to involvement in both of those efforts.
Thank you. And I neglected to thank Public Works for the amazing job that they did during the storms. We couldn't manage without them. Okay, so are we moving on to item 12? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Item 12 is introduction of an ordinance repealing and replacing Article 2, Animal Regulation Licensing Vaccinations, Dangerous Animals, and Prohibited Conduct.
Thank you, Mayor Vaterlaus. I'll be giving a verbal presentation on this item. And I would like to note that Lori Morton Fiesel, the Chief Animal Control and Licensing Officer from San Mateo County, is on Zoom with us. We don't have a PowerPoint presentation, so perhaps we can bring her up as a panelist. And she's really available to answer any questions about the nuts and bolts of this. Of course, the city attorney's office has been involved in this work for the ordinance update. And then if there are questions that relate to Police Department operational aspects of animal control, Chief Sarah Suwa is here as well to chime in. But what you have before you is to update our animal control ordinance to be substantially the same as other cities in the county and the county's ordinance because for animal control, we participate in a county-wide program, which is a great cost savings to all of the individual cities. The county administers the animal control contract. And several years ago, we went through an RFP process to, to select in a competitive way the operator of that contract. And the Peninsula Humane Society won that contract again. They had been the operator, but the new contract is a much refined contract. And one of the implementation steps is to update and make consistent all of the animal control ordinances in all the cities that are participating in this program. So what you have before you tonight is, is a, an ordinance to update, be consistent with the county ordinance. And that's required for us to continue our participation in this county-wide program. I'll go through a little bit of detail in the ordinance update before you, but the process involved, and it's taken, taken a while, over a year. It involved city attorney representations from numerous cities, working with the county in, on what this ordinance, this consistent ordinance should be, and looking at opportunities to clarify existing language, remove repetitive language, add changes to the existing ordinance with an emphasis on increasing efficiency and enforcement, clarifying language deemed confusing, and addressing inevitable shortfalls that had emerged after years of experience in the enforcement of this ordinance. So what you have before you is a revised Chapter 6.04, Enhanced Enforcability Streamline Process, Clarity and Definitions Based on Real-World Experience. And most importantly, public safety is at the core of the animal control ordinance. Mentioning some of the details of the ordinance, I'll run through a few of these. It, again, it updates existing definitions to improve enforcement capabilities. It lowers the rabies vaccination age requirement to be consistent with current state law. It updates language and enforcement regarding what are called, and this is a definition in the ordinance, vicious animals. It updates language and enforcement regarding the category of dangerous animals. It removes language indicating that an animal owner may not maintain a dangerous animal in a home with a juvenile person under the age of 18. And if there are questions about that, Ms. Morton Fiesel can go more into, into that. And it revises and updates the fee schedule and further clarifies the offenses for which administrative citations may be issued for violations of the chapter. One of the updates that you'll see in there is, that is made to existing provisions of our ordinance is that a requirement that cat owners obtain a license for domesticated cats. We previously didn't have that, so that's required in the county. And the county has had that for many years because it helps to ensure cats are vaccinated for rabies as vaccination is required for licensing. And it also helps share the revenue collected for permit fees between both dog owners and cats, cat owners, rather than just dog owners. The animal control program is a, a program where the city spends The animal control program is a, a program where the city spends in the range of $260,000 to $280,000 a year for this service. And it's a very important service, as, as mentioned, for all the, the above reasons, and the countywide approach to it has proven to be very cost-effective, the most cost-effective way, rather than independent cities having their own animal control services. That completes the summary of the ordinance, and staff and Ms. Fiesel are available for any questions.
Questions from council, Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you very much. I have two questions, and I ask these ahead of time. One of them, I think, is helpful for the community to hear the answer to, and the other one, I haven't fully heard back the answer yet. In terms of what might be helpful for the community, you mentioned that cats now will need to be licensed once the law takes effect. My initial question was, are like current cats that are unlicensed in Pacifica grandfathered in, or what's the process by which they must be licensed?
So the ordinance does require that, that cats be licensed once the law takes effect, and I am going to turn to Ms. Morton Fiesel, because she has some information about perhaps a grace period, and I don't have that, those details in front of me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and councilmembers, and City Manager Woodhouse. Yes, to answer your question, what will be in place is, once the ordinance is passed, the licensing company will, for the first 60 days, not apply a late fee. So every residence will have that time period in which to get a license. There is no mechanism for grandfathering clause, but the residents will get that benefit.
While I have you, how will our residents know that they need to license their cat so as to not have a late fee?
Generally, what happens is, when they take their cat for a rabies vaccine, the vaccination certificate is sent to my office, and then we would send them a notification, and then they have a set period of time in which to register. So it's usually a 30 to 60 day period of time. And if there's a way to put it on the city website, I'd probably recommend that as well.
So are you?
But it's, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, does that mean that what triggers that grace period is being taken in for a rabies shot?
Yes, yes. So, so that slip then comes to my office, and then we alert the owner that they now need to license their cat. We're not going to do any canvassing, going door to door, or anything like that. It's, we will, we will get them as they get their vaccines.
So like, if I just got my cat vaccinated last week, and then I'm not doing it again for another year, it's in a year from now when they go in, that's what triggers the, hey, you need to get your cat licensed, or there's going to be a late fee?
Correct. The other mechanism would be if your cat were to bite someone, and the Humane Society were to come out and quarantine your cat at your home, you would get a voidable license citation, giving you a set amount of time to get a license. But again, it's a, I think it's 15 days in which to get your cat licensed.
Thank you very much. My second question, and by the way, I attended the Atherton reorganization, and I actually got to hear them have this discussion, so while you did not see me at the time, it's good to see you again, Ms. Morton Fiesel.
Thank you.
My other question has to do with what's third, page 38 of the staff report, packet page 211, it's 6-1.231, entitled Scope. It's all of one sentence, "The provisions of this article shall be in effect in the unincorporated areas of this county and, except were so adopted, are not applicable to any city." My brain can see how that applies, but it seems like when I read it, it should pertain specifically to the city rather than unincorporated areas, since it's our ordinance. Again, mechanically, it seems like it pans out the same either way, but I was wondering if it wouldn't be prudent to alter that slightly to pertain directly to us.
Yes, I, I agree with you, and that question came to me today from your city council, or city attorney, and that can be removed, or it can state Pacifica. So the county section could be removed, yes.
Thank you very much.
And, and Madam Mayor, if I could, so, yes, that, that issue, what, I did discuss that with Denise Bizzano, who worked on this ordinance, and the language we're recommending, if the council is amenable to it, and we do agree that that clarification makes sense. We would insert the sentence, "The provisions in that section of scope, the provisions of this article shall apply within the geographic boundaries of the city." And my understanding is that Ms. Fiesel would not object to that, that that's not a substantial deviation from the ordinance.
Thank you, Mary Beer.
Can you just explain to me why cats were included in the first place? I have very mean cats, just nobody can come into my house, and that's fine. So I, I have a hard time understanding why people would have to register their cats.
Yes, absolutely. There's actually several reasons. The first reason is, as, as the city manager mentioned, is rabies. Bats are the highest carrier of rabies. Cats are more likely to catch bats than our dogs, so we want to make sure that more cats are vaccinated for rabies. The other thing is revenue. I'm actually a Pacifica resident. I have three dogs that I license, and, and it should be the same for cat owners that are domestic. Now, if your cats are feral, and they live outside, or you have a cat colony, it does not pertain to those cats, but it does if you have a cat in your home. And as mentioned, at the end of the year, we look at the total that Pacifica owes for animal control, and we subtract the number of licenses sold within your city. So it is a benefit for the cities to also have cat licensing. Cat licenses per year, if they are altered, are $9.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the answer.
You're welcome, sure.
I did push my button. I have a few questions. One, the staff report says the supervisors are reviewing and hearing this tomorrow. I'm assuming they might be able to make changes at that point, so I'm, I'm just wondering how that works with what we're approving tonight. I see you.
They've already, they've already passed the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So the, this is the second reading tomorrow.
Oh, I see.
So I, I do not anticipate any changes to the ordinance.
I have a dog, and I don't know that I've ever paid this tax. I'm going to have to go and look. So, I, I mean, is this, this is a responsibility of everyone who owns a dog to pay the city, what they're not given a bill or anything, though? So if, if they're, I mean, I guess there's, is there a chance that people aren't getting their shots, that they're not getting noticed, that they're not paying? Right, is, is there some other way that we're monitoring and enforcing the licensing?
It would be through a rabies vaccine. So if your animal is vaccinated, we get notification of that, and then you will receive a letter stating that you need to license your animal. The other way is through animal control. If they contact you, if they go to your home for a complaint or quarantine at that point.
And, and so if you send someone a notice saying that they need to pay it, are you enforcing it if they don't pay it? How, how do you even know that it's paid?
Yeah, we, we get a list, and we know who has paid and who hasn't. Our contractor, Pet Data, sends three notices to the owner. Then we get a list. One of the things that can happen is with the new administrative citations, that in the future, you could receive an administrative citation. We are not at that point right now. What we're hoping is, in the ordinance, there's also a section for an amnesty month, where all of the late fees are waived. So once a year, we will have that amnesty month that will be noticed to all of the residents in the county, and we hope that we increase the licensing that way.
Any other questions from council? I have no yellow cards from the public. Is there anyone out there who'd like to speak on that? Is there anyone on the phone?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. Seeing no one getting up, we'll bring it back to council, close the public here comment, and bring it back to council for deliberation.
So I'm just ready to make a motion if there's nothing to say.
Okay.
And I do want to thank Denise Bizzano. My understanding was there was a team of five different city attorneys of the 20 jurisdictions, and Denise was one of them from ours, so thank you, Denise, if you're out there. You'll relax. I move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica repealing and replacing Article 2, Animal Regulation Licensing Vaccinations Dangerous Animals and Prohibited Conduct of Chapter 1, Animal Control, within Title 6, Sanitation and Health. To clarify existing definitions, enact additional requirements for animal control and revise animal control service fees. In finding introduction of ordinance exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3, the general rule exemption with the amended language to 6-1.231, entitled Scope, as read by a city attorney.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, please vote.
With the motion made by Councilmember Big Stick with the item as amended, as stated, and seconded by Councilmember Bowles, the vote passes unanimously.
Thank you, and on to item 13, update regarding the community engagement plan for the local coastal land use plan, LCLUP certification process. And we have Stephanie Cervantes, Senior Planner, to present the staff report.
While Ms. Cervantes is getting settled, I'll kick this off. Mayor Vadoas, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager, and I, I believe Planning Director Murdoch is not able to, to join us this evening, because he's ill. What you have before you, some of the highlights that, that I want to provide, and Ms. Cervantes will dive into a PowerPoint that we have, is modifying the public engagement plan that the council had previously approved for the LCLUP update process that we're in the middle of. And based on the incredible turnout at the December 5th meeting, and great amount of questions that were received and concern about the complexities, complexities of, of these issues, I remember at that meeting, providing some introductory comments to say that, you know, normally land use planning, coastal land use planning is, is complex, and when you, when you add all of the regulatory and economic and legal and social and environmental components of the local coastal land use plan, it becomes incredibly complex. So we, we recognize the complexity of the issue. There's a lot of information that has been presented over many years on the LCLUP, and after processing that information and all of the questions from that meeting number two, my recommendation in essence is to add an additional meeting that provides for a Q and A with the public, a long Saturday session. Ms. Cervantes will go into the, the details of that, and extend this process to be a four-meeting process instead of a three-meeting process. The staff report talks about some of the project priority impacts for the council's work plan, for the council's strategic plan, that adding the additional meeting and work will bring with it. But this, this process is very important, and we want to make a great effort, as much as possible, to try to explain these complex issues as clearly as possible, so that the council is well informed in making the decision in the end that the council will make. And I'll stop there and turn it over to Ms. Cervantes.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayors, councilmembers. I'm Stephanie Cervantes, Senior Planner with the Planning Division, and I'll be talking further about item 13, which is the community engagement plan for the local, local coastal land use plan certification process. So as Mr. Woodhouse mentioned, October of last year, this council approved the three-meeting community engagement plan, two of which, two of the meetings have already been conducted. The first in November, in which staff presented the Coastal Commission. Staff suggested modifications and highlighted what we're calling the greenies versus the whites. Meeting two was in December, and it was a community roundtable discussion in which staff introduced the special resiliency areas, or SRAs. And, and the original plan, meeting three is scheduled for later this month, or early February, and it was intended to be a discussion of the potential comment letter that we would, at the end of the day, be sending to the California Coastal Commission for their consideration. So as Mr. Woodhouse mentioned, during the December 5th community roundtable discussions, we introduced the SRAs to over 150 attendees. While staff did receive positive feedback, we also received feedback that stated that there was a lot of questions around the new policy language and around the entire LCLUP process. Many attendees felt that the, that there was questions that went unanswered. And so in response to that, the city manager is recommending that we do a new meeting three format. So our previous meeting three would become meeting four, and the new meeting three format would be essentially a full day of a special meeting that would be conducted in two different sessions. The morning session would include staff responding to previously submitted questions from the community, plus at least one hour of live Q and A. We would break for, for lunch, and then the afternoon session would be a Q and A with city council, and it would also include discussions on the potential alternative modifications. So as part of this report, staff is intending to provide a draft potential alternative modifications as well as case studies, and as well as frequently asked questions related to the subject. So in terms of this potential meeting three, new meeting three, we are asking the city council for some direction, which would include what is the appropriate venue to host this meeting, as well as if a professional meeting facilitator should be engaged in order to allow the community and staff to better manage that Q and A. So as the, the council is considering changes to the community engagement plan, it's important to consider the June 2024 certification hearing that both the city and the CCC staff have been working towards. While June may seem like it's far off, there is a lot of work that needs to be done between now and then. So this is just a, a quick timeline of the different major steps that we need to take between now and June in order to be able to achieve that June certification hearing. Additionally, the Planning Department has several major strategic plan-related items on its current work plan. Staff had anticipated conclusion of the majority of the LCLUP work to conclude in February. The addition of a fourth meeting will delay work on other items until at least the end of March, possibly longer. Two of those items that, that will be delayed as a result of adding a fourth meeting includes amendments to the short-term rental ordinance, as well as amendments to the tree protection ordinance. There's also other Planning Department work-related items that cannot be delayed due to legal So the recommended action for tonight's item is consider and approve a revised community engagement plan for the city's effort to obtain CCC certification of the LCLUP, and conform a reprioritization of the strategic plan, work plan items assigned to the Planning Department. In addition, the city manager is requesting direction on what is the appropriate venue to host the new meeting three, and if a professional meeting facilitator should be engaged for the meeting. should be engaged for the meeting. Thank you, and staff is available for questions.
And Mayor Valerlos, if I may just add a concluding comment, I wanted to make sure, for purposes of tonight's discussion, just to be clear that this discussion is about the public engagement process for the LCLUP, and it's not intended to be about the substantive policy issues that that process is intended to address.
Thank you. Questions from council? First was Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe actually that was my light from the motion on the last item. But since you've called on me, the one question and not deliberation I kind of have for staff is how we arrived on one hour as being enough time for live Q&amp;A?
Yeah, and I think in that, so, to reframe Councilmember Big Stick's question, the recommendation is that we encourage the community to submit their questions in advance so that staff can spend the time to really analyze those questions and come up with good answers. As I mentioned, a lot of these land use and policy applications and questions are very complex. So, but we realize folks will have questions the day of. And it was, I wouldn't say totally arbitrary because we anticipate there will be a lot of time needed in the morning session to talk about questions submitted in advance. But we do want to allow some time in that morning session for questions on the spot. And it could be the case that some of those questions are, you know, very complex, and staff's not going to have the answer right away at hand about it because it might require some research. For example, I can't think of an example, but, you know, you could imagine that. So, it's just a framework to say, we're trying to all work together to be transparent about this information. So submit questions in advance so we can do the appropriate homework to make the meeting run efficiently. But of course, if you do have questions day of, feel free to ask those. Can't guarantee we'll have really concise answers. Maybe we'll on some, maybe we won't on others. So, you know, semi-arbitrary, about one hour versus three hours for the questions submitted in advance. And it might run longer, it might run shorter.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beer?
Thank you. I just want to be super clear about the things that we are discussing tonight, that we can discuss tonight because I have concerns about the content of what we'll be talking about at that meeting, in the third meeting, and then the format. And so are we going to be able to ask questions about that? Will we be able to deliberate about that? Like, what's going to be included in the second half of the day? That's my question.
Yeah. So, I guess the, you know, when you get into the substantive policy question, I'll know it when I hear it, right? But, so it's hard to say what is or is not. The intent of this meeting and the packet that will be prepared over the next few weeks and released in advance of the meeting is to address all of the alternate modifications that are being considered. So it's to address everything. Not just the special resiliency areas, not just the substantial modifications policy. It's intended to lay it all out on the table, provide examples and case studies that address a whole host. Now, the emphasis will obviously fall to a lot of the major policy issues. But the scope of the meeting, the content, is to talk about it all and to have a draft letter that addresses that all that the council can react to and discuss in the afternoon after that Q&amp;A.
I have a lot, I have a lot I want to say. I just don't even think it's, I think we need to hear from public comment because I just have a lot I want to say, so.
Councilmember Bowles?
Well, just as a follow-up to Mary's question, I mean, one of my concerns and is whether we're talking about the whole 125 green or white items also because those affect the whole city, except for maybe Rockaway and Sharp Park if we do these SRAs. But that's a huge conversation that this community has not been able to have yet. And I really want to make sure that we have that opportunity at this meeting as well. You know, from what I understand, and I went back to watch the video of the December 5th meeting, you know, I appreciate all the work that you and planning staff have been doing on the SRAs. What I gather is that, or actually, I mean, what Kevin said specifically was that the SRAs are essential to having a certified LCLUP that is acceptable to the city. I don't know if that's true. I mean, I don't, you know, from what I'm hearing so far from most of the public, and maybe it's because they don't quite understand it all yet, I certainly don't understand it all yet, is whether we really are behind this idea of the SRAs at all. I mean, there are a lot of caveats to them too. So, I want to make sure that we understand what's being requested of us in the 125, whether we can agree to them or not, where we have room to negotiate on those things that, again, that impact the whole rest of the city. And then, if we're going to the SRAs, you know, explain very clearly what are the benefits of the SRAs and what are the additional policies that are potentially drawbacks to them? What? Is that a question? Yeah, well, are we talking about the whole thing? Because I think, yes, I'm sorry, I do. I do divulge. But my main question is, yeah, I think that's what's missing. And I want to make sure that we can talk about those 125. And it's not just a Q&amp;A, but I think we're going to need some presentations that are more in-depth than what we've heard from planning before. I'll leave it that for now. Maybe, but, I mean, the public might have more questions once they hear more about those things. Anyway, that's my current thought. Go ahead.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer. I have a lot of questions about this whole process.
Yeah.
And I don't want to get into the, you know, specifics of those questions prior to public comment. I don't want to get ahead of that. I don't want to get into deliberations. That's what I was trying to, like, send my, you know, laser communication because there is a lot to truly talk about. And so, to Councilmember Beer's question about what can we talk about tonight? I'm afraid I have to say, I think we have to have some latitude and some leeway. Because we can't talk about the things we can't, can't get into the specifics, understood. We can't deliberate, understood. But there's a proposal before us that has a lot, is kind of predicated on some certain dates. And I have questions about that. And so I don't know if now is the right time to ask that, or shall we have public comment and then discuss it? It's really about the timeline. My initial question is really about the timeline. And you had a slide about that timeline and the June 2023 and such. So, I have a lot of questions about that because I think there's a lot of information that's needed on the part of the community and on the part of the council. So, that's my question.
So would you like to go back to that now? Or would you like me to open it up to public comment?
I mean, I would say if you have timeline questions, now's a good time to ask that because we had a slide.
You want to put the timeline up? And then, I'll rely on our city attorney. If I start wavering too far off this topic, please stop me.
There, okay. And I apologize if I say something that's counter to what the city manager said, but I hope I'm just giving clarification to what the city manager said. When he says that we're not, you know, we should not be talking about substantive policy issues, in part, it's because we don't have all of the staff here to answer those substantive SRA-type questions tonight. But in terms of any other types of questions, and even substantive questions on the SRA arguably are within the topic of this staff report. I think what staff has, so, you don't have to worry about, from a legal perspective, is this within the subject matter of the agenda item? I think it is. I think what staff is telling you is that real substantive policy discussion with regard to, why did we create the SRA? Why do we believe that the SRA is the path forward? We don't have the key, you know, and Stephanie, I'm sure, can give us her interpretation. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we do want the Planning Director, Christian Murdoch, here to respond to those questions. Both he and Stephanie have been, you know, intimately involved in this process for years. So, I think the reason staff is saying this shouldn't be a substantive discussion is because we don't have the right people here to really fully, you know, interpret your questions on real substantive issues and provide you with real accurate answers. I think that's really, and so to the city manager's point, I think we're going to have to play this by ear. You know, I think with regard to timeline questions, those certainly, I think, should be asked before public comment. To the extent you have more substantive policy issues that you may have, we should wait until after public comment, and then, you know, staff can tell you, we can answer that or we can't answer that.
And if I could add, the city attorney got it mostly right, I think. But when I say substantive policy discussions, so, everyone has a lot of questions about, what does the special resiliency area actually mean on the ground in real-world practice for project applications and approvals? That's the work that staff is doing following the December 3rd meeting in preparation for the February 3rd or December 5th, whatever day it was, preparation for the February meeting right now and the consultant working on the specific case studies and analysis. That's the work that needs to happen to translate all of that into, as one commenter put it at the meeting, you know, laypersons, you know, a kid could understand it type of examples. So, we're not prepared to dive into and talk about and go down the rabbit hole of those specific policies tonight. That's what I mean about not having substantive policy discussion tonight.
Thanks for that clarification.
Christine?
Yeah, just, I mean, my concern about the timeline, I mean, you're asking a lot of this meeting in February, right? I mean, if we're going to talk about the whole 125, plus these complicated SRA policies that we spent a whole evening talking about that left most of us more confused than clarified. And then you want us to give our opinions and somehow deliberate enough so that staff can prepare this comment letter? I don't think that's enough time. So I'll just say that.
Oh, if I may, I'm looking forward to having that discussion on the other side of public comment. I think that we don't know what the end result of our conversation will be, and we should hear public comment first.
Okay, okay, sure.
Okay. So, I'm going to open the public comment. The first card I have is Scott McIntosh, followed by Tissa Yance and Dan Yance.
Hello. I am Scott McIntosh, a Pacifica resident, born and raised here. My topic is really about the seawall. It's 13 or 14. 14 is next. But anyway, in regards to the seawall, I remember back in the early 80s when Lindemar Valley flooded during a rainstorm with an unusually high tide. As we all can remember, rowboats could be seen in Lindemar Shopping Center parking lot. The city government back then, along with businesses such as Safeway and the community, worked together to fix the flooding problem. That's an example of successful city government without the Coastal Commission's help. The golf course was flooded too. It had a large lake right in the middle. The ocean there is blocked by a levee, just a simple dirt berm. How simple of a solution is that? And it works. Good government works with and respects businesses and residents of Pacifica. The project goal is clearly stated. Costs and benefits are used to guide the project to the desired outcome with clarity. Bad government doesn't work with businesses and residents. It is weak government, led by the Coastal Commission, and does not represent businesses or residents in Pacifica, but the 1%, often a distant land with unknown priorities. The project therefore becomes confusing and impossible with outside influences degrading the project. The costs and benefits are not clear. The goals are not met, and the costs go through the roof. One second. The Coastal Commission encroaches upon our property rights and damages our neighborhoods by placing our homes in special districts, preventing us from remodeling or maintaining our homes. What does stealing our rights have to do with the seawall? It should not be included in the project. Please have the strength of good government and reject this power grab by the Coastal Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tina, Dan, and then Cliff Lawrence.
Hi, I'm Tissa Yance. I have four topics that need action. One is disclosure of fiscal impact. Two, disclosure of plan's objective. Three, clearly informing homeowners. And four, prioritizing accommodating a larger number of attendees over coffee and donuts and public comment earlier and for a substantially longer portion at the January 29th meeting. At the beginning of the city council meetings, the Awone Indians are recognized as never having ceded their responsibility to the land or its people. I would like to recognize that I myself and the homeowners who reside in Pacifica have also not ceded their responsibility for the land and the well-being of Pacifica. The fiscal impact seems to be absent The fiscal impact seems to be absent from the proposed plans. There is a fiscal impact listed for voter issues before elections so voters can make responsible decisions. What is the impact of hundreds of homes in Pacifica on trajectory to lose their property value and even potentially be demolished, which is another form of removing all property owners' rights as happens under eminent domain? Responsibility for the vitality of Pacifica is inseparable from Pacifica's already diminished ability to raise funds. It is obviously disempowering as lacking funds limits our ability to defend ourselves from unjust overreach of authority that diminishes our rights. The abbreviation LCLUP, like its wordy content, is not very descriptive. Something like returning California coast to its former unoccupied pristine condition would be more honest. What is the purpose of this proposed plan? What is being defended? Is the property of homeowners in Pacifica or the movement of the beach sacrificing property to do so? If so, this needs to be clearly communicated upfront. Why hide it unless it seems likely homeowners would not consider this priority in the right order? Why are homeowners being affected by these decisions so often unaware of these proposed plans? The majority of the neighbors I talked to have received no notice of this plan and being uninformed are not prepared to voice their comment. And lastly, coffee and donuts is nice, but a poor substitute for public opportunity for voicing comment and room to attend. Ditch the tables and make this meeting accessible to citizens. Overflow room is appreciated only if people have maximum access to attend the main meeting room. Thank you.
Dan, then Cliff, then Jeff Gueye.
Good evening. My name's Dan Yance. I'd like to thank Mayor Protam Beckmeyer for wanting to have leeway in the comments. This is a very important issue. Also, City Manager and Planning Commission on seeing the need for an additional meeting. I appreciate that, not without appreciation for all the work that you guys have done in this, but it's an important topic and there's a lot of uninformed homeowners in the area I live in. My wife and I are in the Lindemar area of Pacifica. I've talked with several of our neighbors and not one of them, not one, was aware of the modifications that the Coastal Commission is requiring of our LCLUP. In regards to the meeting, I'd like to thank you in advance for voting to have the meeting. And in terms of the size of the forum, expect a lot of people with a lot of questions. And I would also appreciate a longer Q and A. I understand that you have to set sometime, but I think there's going to be a lot of questions after the original questions with the city's answers. It's going to just raise more questions. So I appreciate you guys' attention and informing us about this, and I look forward to the meeting and thank you in advance.
Thank you. Cliff, then Jeff, and then Larry Bothon.
Good evening. My name is Cliff Lawrence. I thank the board and I wish you well in your endeavors on the new year. I'm a little perplexed how we're, we're at this point. Normally, we're, we have interesting but regular protocols we, we follow, pretty logical in the way we do things. My question is, how did we get here? Because it seems we're going to the next step before we've actually done something that's predicated on. And what I mean by that is, when we had the last meeting, we were all expecting to discuss the green areas, as we call them, because it seemed to be the next step. Now, I have no knowledge that the board members have rejected the Coastal Commission's suggestions, which would be a solution. So why are we looking for alternatives, something that adds a double complexity to the whole plan? These STRs and people worrying about what's going to happen in those areas, you're not talking about the areas that's, that aren't designated and how, what will be the rules implied there. Out in the, out there, this is what I'm hearing. This is, people are really concerned as to what the impact's going to be, not only in the, in the areas you're designated, but the non-areas. This is so confusing. How did we get there? How did we propose this before rejecting, that is you, the policy, the policy people, before you decided that you weren't going to accept the Coastal Commission's position? Don't we do that first, reject that, and then we look for alternatives? I thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, Larry, and then Cindy Abbott.
Hello, council members. I'm not going to talk three minutes, so I'm just going to keep it short, winging it. Sorry. So if we look at 125 items and we have three hours to cover them, that's a minute and a half each, just over that. You can't read the, the issue in that amount of time on some of these issues, let alone explain it and have Q and A on it. That's just ridiculous. And the, the whole idea, again, that we are trying to negotiate against ourselves, against a, they threw out four years of our work, came up with their own, and that's where we're working from. That is just mind-boggling. Why are we even doing this? This, that meeting is a waste of time. We all know that the public is against this, and as, they're, they're either confused or against it. And if, as they become informed, they're going to be more against it. And as a council, you're going to end up having to reject it anyway. Let's not spend the money and everybody's Saturday on a meeting that doing Q and A that is going to end up with the same result. Maybe we should do more of a open Q and A that's online, that could be answered. We don't have to have a meeting. They could answer the questions and we could almost have like a discussion amongst each one of the items. We could go through those and we'd have, it'd be much more substantive. It would be more useful to have that and not tie everybody's time up for a Saturday and spend the money on it and coffee and donuts and all that. Just seems like a more reasonable thing to do. I don't know if anybody's heard of an AMA and Ask Me Anything, but something like that would work. That's where staff is online and we could submit questions and they have time to respond to them, and it's, it's an option, okay? So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Larry, followed by Cindy Abbott, and then Mark Steckbart, and that's the last yellow card I have.
Sorry, I thought somebody else was in front of me, but anyway. You know, when I was listening to staff's description of the roundtable meeting, it didn't sound like the same one I attended. They said that they received positive feedback from many attendees of the meeting. They also said it was a substantive discussion about the SRA when in fact, it was something that was basically sprung on us that night. But, you know, the kind of comments I was hearing around the room was not positive at all. It was basically frustration, outrage, betrayal. My home will be worth nothing. This is a taking. It's a death by a thousand cuts. I thought the city worked for us. Speaking of death by a thousand cuts, the proposal for meeting number three as an all-day Q and A is a non-starter if it's just another processional where staff reads their responses to pre-screened questions. You must advertise it to everyone in Pacifica by mail and give the public adequate time to get up to speed and educated on the topic. This has been sorely lacking in the process so far. We need all concerned homeowners on deck for this one. Let them submit questions in writing and get answers back before the Q and A, and let's meet and have an honest dialogue in real time with straight answers. We've already heard false statements on the real nature of SRAs and what constitutes a substantial structural modification. Homeowners need to understand what the Coastal Commission's demands are, what it will cost us personally and as a community, and more importantly, how you will respond to them. So far, all we're seeing from staff is a willingness to capitulate to those demands without getting anything in return from the Coastal Commission. The SRA demands, or compromise, got us the tsunami evacuation zones included under the managed retreat rules, which was never part of the original LCLUP. That would include a large swath of West Lindemar. It also got us the deed restrictions to make property owners liable for damage to their own property and the admission that shoreline protections will ultimately be removed in the SRAs too. So how long do we continue this death dance with the Coastal Commission? Tonight's agenda stresses the urgency of getting the LCLUP done and moving on to other more pressing matters. There's nothing more pressing than the very existence of Pacifica, and the only way it survives is by telling the Coastal Commission, "We stand by the 2020 LCLUP that was approved after years of public input by Pacificans." It's time for council to say so and force them to react. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, Cindy Abbott. Please, because you just prolong everything, so we, we understand, but thank you. Cindy, followed by Mark.
Okay. I'm sure I'm not going to get any applause, so don't worry. Hi, I'm Cindy Abbott, also here in, in West Shaw Park. And I'll just, you know, the one thing that we're united in together tonight, from council members that began this conversation to people who have been, you know, pushing for different parts of the LCLUP for decades, I've been involved in this process for all 12 years, and the only thing we're united in right now is confusion. And that all started at that December 5 meeting where we originally thought that it was going to be about the proposed modifications that were made by the California Coastal Commission to the city's submission, to have a completely new, out of who knows where idea dropped on all of us. It's only made everybody, it more complicated. It's muddied the waters. It's made things that now no one knows what we're talking about. And that's really sad because it didn't have to happen. We could have been focusing on those suggested modifications, the way we had been told we would, which could have given us an approved plan. If you read those modifications, it's my strong belief that the California Coastal Commission staff has provided a reasonable path forward, giving and taking to the city. They're not demanding managed retreat. They've never managed, demanded managed retreat. They require people to think seriously about reality. That's why we spent years on adaptation plan, to talk about what's going on. In the 27 years that I've lived here and so many people that have lived here in West Shaw Park and other parts of the city, we're seeing more and more impact of the climate crisis. But right now, we're just arguing with each other. We really need to look at those modifications that have been suggested to us and see if there is indeed a path forward there. I don't know how many have read them, but right now, there's a lot of misinformation about, out there about what's being proposed, who's demanding what, and who came up with these SRA ideas that nobody had heard about until December 5. I agree, we need to get back on a track of communicating and focusing on getting an approved LCLUP out there, and we can do that by looking at what the actual updates have been recommended and if we can live with them. Coastal Commission also has just continued to be bashed. It's based on Coastal Act, the people's law that was voted in by everyone. I welcome you to attend a presentation on Thursday, January 25 at 7:00 PM about what the Coastal Act is about. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Mark?
Thank you. I like donuts. I'm looking forward to the meeting, although it's going to rank right up there with going to motor vehicles or root canal. I would suggest you look at the schedule, and there should be a two-week rule. February 3 won't work. You need ever-shifting Coastal Commission demands and communications with staff. There'll be certain documents available, say, February 8. So put that up on the website. Public gets two weeks to evaluate it, send it back to staff. They get two weeks to figure out what it all means. They respond on the website, and then the public gets another two weeks to read staff response, then you hold meeting three, probably the end of March, okay? Eight hours. If you deal, to riff off of Jeff's suggestion, the 125 Coastal Commission demands, which are probably escalating as we speak, for 10 minutes, that's 20 hours of debate. So you're approaching a full week of debate if you do it right. Nobody's going to put up with that. But anyway, have the fourth meeting sometime end of April, where the letter will be presented for council consideration, because the third meeting is going to be very difficult, and the mantra is going to be very simple. How does this affect homeowners in the local economy? Who pays? Where does this leave us in 10 years? Can I get my roof repaired? Because for now, two months and two meetings, that question is still unanswered, and I think you can't. So nobody's going to buy into this thing. To discuss who knows what when on fabricating SRAs out of thin air, I think the city ought to put all communications with Coastal Commission, emails, conversations, notes off phone meetings, on the city website, so we can see who said what to whom and when. They're all public records. They should be on the website. Three, you're going to end up on the Del Mar model. This is not going to work for Pacifica. This city will not exist in 10 years. In fact, the RV resort on Palmetto is due to go in the water the end of next year. So big smoking hole in the ground, four-acre hole produced by the Coastal Commission, lapping up on Palmetto and Highway 1, November 25. That's managed retreat. Thank you.
Frank, you can speak. Please fill out a yellow card after.
Will do. Frank Villa, Lindemar. When I was brought up the, the issue about the seawall, local coastal plan, it really just didn't resonate to me how important it was. But I see that it is something that could absolutely devastate our, our city. We've worked on this as a city for a number of years, and to deal with a timeline that's set by Coastal Commission, who seems to arbitrarily change their own dates, get back to us when they feel like it, and it's just ridiculous. So many people are so upset with the Coastal Commission, an unelected body that puts down these mandates that we've got to follow. It's just ridiculous. I like the idea of having another meeting in general, but we've asked for, and we had petitions by over 120 people for a special study session so we could have a communication and ask questions. That didn't happen. Putting in an hour question, it's just, it's just not going to work. I mean, if we want to do a meeting to just check off a box and push aside all these questions and concerns, let's not even have it. A lot of people are suggesting just drop this Coastal Commission stuff, like the city of Del Mar did. Move on with our own needs. We know what they are. We all want to protect our, our city. So I don't have a good answer what we should do, but it just doesn't seem like the right thing moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? And then please fill out a card. Come up and speak, but then please fill out a card.
Okay, yeah, Marie Swan from Shaw Park area. So I just want to make one comment. Just keeps baffling in my head, okay? My, and I realize I might have a limited understanding of the Coastal Commission's role, but it seems like they want to make everything natural. Okay, you know, I like natural too, right? And it all makes us all feel good that things are natural. But then on the other hand, they say, well, this is really the result of climate change, you know, the sea level rising is climate change, as a result of environmental things that people have done, right? So that doesn't sound too natural to me. So I don't understand why we need to fight back to make something natural when it's not natural, if it's not natural. I mean, so just, so they want to get rid of our homes or let them go under the water for why? And why isn't the city just saying, hell no? That's, I don't, I don't get it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else from the audience? Okay. Please fill out a card.
I've got my yellow card completed afterwards. Yes, my name's Ed Ochi. I'm a longtime resident of West Shaw Park. I'm watching this going on. I was reading the documentation for, the documentation for this meeting. What really concerns me here is that we have the, a case of the tail wagging the dog. We're having cited that we need to hit a strict timeline here. We need to get something going because it will otherwise, it will, it will impact other strategic plan priorities. Maybe we should be taking, taking a little bit more holistic view and saying, what are the real priorities here? Do we need to modify staff's workload for the next year? Change some of these other priorities here? You're dealing with a major long-term issue. You're saying, we need to get it done now, now so that the Coastal Commission staff will have enough time, you're talking about two or three months, so that they can adequately prepare their comments and their recommendations to the commission. So what's happening here is that the citizens of Pacifica are all getting caught in this, we need to fast-track what you're doing in order so that everybody else can meet their timelines. I need, I think that we need to take a little bit better look at that and really take a, take a good look at this idea of, we're going to do one meeting, we're going to come away with enough information that we can, we can draft a letter and get it to the Coast Commission, Coastal Commission on time. I think that you're really fast-tracking here, that you're shortchanging the citizens, the residents of Pacifica in order to meet sort of external artificial deadlines. Thank you.
Seeing no one else from the audience, Emily, do we have people online?
We have three raised hands. The first raised hand is Samuel Casillas.
Okay. Sam?
Hi, City Council. How you all doing? The city needs to be honest with its citizens. And let's be clear, the Coastal Commission enforces the constitutionally-approved Coastal Act, that the people of California overwhelmingly approved and voted on to protect our beaches and coastal resources, which are all owned by all, including mostly the underserved communities throughout California. throughout California and all the people of California, including people in Pacifica, those in Lindemar, all the way back. We own the beaches. This whole process stinks of desperation because the city staff at the direction of the council is desperately trying to find ways to circumvent the law of the Coastal Act. It is law. Also, once again, the city is selectively choosing the feedback from the public meeting as they always do. There weren't just a lot of questions. Many said that the SRAs are an illegal attempt to circumvent the Coastal Act and CEQA. Also requested, if this idea of the SRAs came from outside Realtor lobbying groups, including SAMCAR and SmartCoast, which are both not independent, but Realtor and developer lobbying groups. We need to be honest about that. Also, what is the final cost of hard-arming Beach Boulevard and now Rockaway Beach as well? And why are all the people of Pacifica having to pay higher property taxes for the benefit of a select few? And then this whole process was marred when we were supposed to have independent facilitators reporting back, yet you actually had SAMCAR political candidates presenting the supposed feedback. So again, let's just make sure that what we're actually doing is being representative of what the Coastal Act is. It's the law. The Coast Commission enforces the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Next call in.
The next raised hand is Peter Loeb.
Good evening. I'd like to say that I agree with almost everything that everybody just said. But I do want to thank you for this agenda item, and I want to thank you for considering having an additional meeting. I think it's very necessary. There are so many questions still to be answered, and I think that the Q&amp;A session, especially with questions submitted beforehand, is just necessary for us to get to a basic, a baseline of understanding of what we're talking about. I wasn't able to attend the roundtable meeting because I was sick, but I've talked to many people that were there. And to a person, they all say that nobody liked the SRA idea. Everybody was opposed to it. Or they had serious questions about what it meant for their property, blah, blah, blah. There is tremendous opposition to the SRA policy, and so I'm concerned that if the meeting that discusses that policy just focuses on that, and it may be something that the Coastal Commission staff is never going to agree to, we may be just wasting our time. I'm also concerned. I appreciate the comments from Councilmember Beer and Councilmember Bowles at the beginning of this item, and also Councilmember Beckmeyer, concerned about the timeline. I think they're raising basic questions, basic concerns about how this is going to work that I share. I am wanting to hear the deliberation about what we're all calling the Greens, the white and the green recommendations. I want to be assured that there will be a lot of time protected in that next meeting where we can walk through those items and talk about it. I met with a group of other people. We went through all of those and looked at them carefully. A lot of them are not particularly controversial. Yes, there are a few that are going to be difficult. I don't deny that, but I want to know that, we have been waiting for this from the first meeting. I want to know that we're going to be able to look at those recommendations and say, what do we agree with? What are we willing to accept? What do we have a real problem with? I think we, I want to have this discussion, and I thank the council for considering these additional. I think there needs to be more than meeting number three and four. I think there needs to be.
Can you finish, Peter? Peter?
I am done. Thank you for your service. Bye.
The last raised hand is from Mary Ann Osberg.
Go ahead, Mary Ann. Mary Ann?
Here we go. Sorry, I was talking myself in my room. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I appreciate the discussion that we're having tonight. One thing I just want to do is clear up that SAMCAR and Realtors, their mission is to protect property rights. So they're not against this. This is what we're discussing and what's happening here on the coast. That is not correct. They're here to help our citizens to protect their properties. With respect to the LCLUP, I'd like to know, where's the actual data that we have sea level rise right now? Where is that data? I haven't seen anything to that effect that this is actually affecting Pacifica right now. What is the sense of urgency? Why are we working with the Coastal Commission? They should be working with us. Our tax dollars are helping pay the salaries of our staff here in Pacifica to help us to remove our own Fifth Amendment rights to protect our own properties. The Fifth Amendment, also known as the Takings Clause, states, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." This provision does not prohibit the United States from acquiring property from private owners, but rather conditions such taking on the payment of just compensation. How much is this taking that's going to be happening going to cost the city? If we lose, let's say, 30% of our city and 80% of our businesses, how is the city actually going to survive? We are going to go bankrupt, and the city will end up being absorbed by the county. Is that what we want? We are mandating to create 1,800-plus units in Pacifica per state mandate, yet we are not protecting our existing affordable housing right here, right now. Want to comment also about these meetings that we're going to be having in the future. I couldn't go to the last one because I had COVID. I would appreciate if we can have public comment available and access for those that are disabled. You know, we're in flu season. COVID's still going around. We need Zoom meeting access. Homeowners, property owners, businesses, business owners, so many people that I have talked to have absolutely no idea, even still today, what is happening in our city. So we absolutely need to have some sort of outreach to people that don't live in the area. There's lots of business owners. There's lots of homeowners that rent out their homes in the city. They have no idea what is happening right here, right now. This is a brutal process. We are being expected to have our homes taken from us without any compensation. For our homes to then, we are expected to demolish our own homes. How brutal is that? We are here, we are paying our taxes, and we need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other colors online?
There are no other raised hands.
Okay, and no one in the audience? We're going to bring it back to council for deliberation. And, sorry, Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I saw that a speaker in the audience who had already spoken once was asking to speak again, so I did want to clarify that once you have spoken once, that's the only opportunity for any given item. Before getting into deliberation specifically, I did want to ask a clarifying question because I heard a couple of people talk about the idea of doing an Ask Me Anything online or some sort of back-and-forth in which there's an online forum for questions and processing answers and some sort of Q&amp;A iterative process over a period of time. I was wondering if staff had any response to that notion.
I'll go first and then turn it over to Ms. Cervantes if she wants to add in. I hadn't thought about that before, but judging from sort of the strings that I see in online forums, it sounds like a full-time job for a very long time for staff to monitor that type of a forum, but it certainly is a possibility. Questions come in, we post answers. It's just sort of an ongoing thing that would require a lot of staff resources.
Yes, thank you. The only thing I would add is that one of the reasons we want to do this format on 23 is so that we can ensure that the city council members are also participating in there as well. So that's one of the reasons why the special meeting is the preferred format.
And I certainly agree that, I think up here, we are, at any given moment, acutely aware of what our resources are and how we are attempting to juggle them in terms of what we must accomplish. And we go from there. It also occurred to me while I was listening that, you know, a lot of people are largely unaware of the process I think we've gone through up until now. While I was reading the staff report, it mentioned that this started in 2009. It's a decade and a half ago. It's not more than 10 years at this point. It's, for all intents and purposes, 15 years. I'm rounding. And my awareness maybe began around 2012 and probably more like 2018, and I'm up here making the decisions, right? Not that I haven't done my homework in the last, you know, more than half a decade, mind you, but between planning commission and reading the documents and making recommendations to then councils, and now I'm a part of the NOW Council. And what occurs to me is there's this other gap that exists aside from a decade-and-a-half process, which seems to be a recurring theme when it comes to our larger documents, and that's COVID. And even if we had had a smooth-flowing process, it was stymied by COVID and the inability for people to show up in certain ways had they wanted to. And I'm not saying this necessarily to imply one direction or another, just to be sensitive to the fact that a part of the theme I'm hearing is that we should be sensitive to, in what ways can we help people maximize their awareness as we do what we need to in order to bring a 15-year-long process to completion in the best way possible for our entire community? I want to begin with that offering.
Kristi?
Yeah, just to follow up on the idea of the questions and answers in writing. I actually think that's a really good idea. I mean, we were going to ask questions ahead of time, and staff was going to prepare responses that they were going to give at the meeting, right? So if they're preparing those responses anyway, couldn't they type them up once, you know, respond to them so that it's all public information? We can talk more about how it's organized and, you know, so forth. But then we don't necessarily have to repeat that same information at the meeting. Everyone's got that, you know, access to that information, and then we can go on to further clarifying questions and maybe make better use of our time. So anyway, I'd like to think about that a little bit. And then just in terms of the schedule, so, you know, I hear, we have been working on this for a long time. I feel like we're finally close. But we need to do the work to see this through, get us over the finish line. I mean, it's so important for us to have this document to help us redevelop Sharp Park, to help us address climate change and our environment too. And so I think putting in the time we need to be able to make sure we understand it and our community understands it, and hopefully, we can come to a consensus, I think is really important. What I understand is that the deadline that's presented here is not the Coastal Commission's deadline. It's our deadline. We're trying to get in front of them at a meeting where they're going to be here nearby. And perhaps Kevin can clarify that. And so we wanted to get this input to them so that they had two or three months so that we could prepare for that meeting. That meeting date isn't the end-all, from what I understand. If we miss that meeting date, it could be later. So can you clarify that just so that we have an understanding as we're deliberating on the process and the steps that are needed, you know, how much time we really have?
Sure, I can speak to some of the timeline drivers. And again, Ms. Cervantes, please chime in. So the June timeline, it's not a statutory requirement. We do know from conversations with coastal staff that they're interested in moving this along and trying to get to a decision about Pacifica's LCLUP. I can't speak to their workload, their work plan, and what they have in the latter half of the year. So what I can speak to, though, is the cascading effect here on city staff. And, you know, the LCLUP is obviously one of the most important priorities for the council. But there is an incredibly robust work plan of many projects and initiatives that the council has directed me, as city manager, to implement and move forward in this timeline and bring to council. And so the things like implementation of the Sharp Park specific plan, that doesn't happen until after the LCLUP is certified by the Coastal Commission. Redevelopment of West Sharp Park doesn't happen until the Sharp Park specific plan is certified as part of the LCLUP. Decisions about the Beach Boulevard infrastructure residency project, the approval certification of the LCLUP will support that project. It relates to it, it will support it. It's not a driver of it because the B-BURB can still occur under the old LCLUP. Redevelopment of 2012 Beach Boulevard, where we sit right now, major council priority. And thinking about the long-term financial sustainability of the city, major project. It doesn't move until we have the general plan for the coastal zone certified by the Coastal Commission. So I'm just expressing that we can take as long as we want from this point on. And the process of the LCLUP is all time-consuming. So we can take as long as we want. We can take six months, we can take nine months until Coastal Commission deadlines kick in. The Planning Department and me will not get anything else done because the LCLUP is all time-consuming. And that's not delivering on what the council has directed me to do with the strategic plan, things like revising the short-term rental ordinance, the next phase of tree ordinance in Pacifica. There's a whole host of projects. So I'm expressing to you that any major initiative that I've been involved in in Pacifica, it's always a really hard push at the end to get it across the finish line. And that's where we are with the LCLUP, and we're trying to do that. And it's the council's prerogative to decide what the priorities are and what the timeline is, and that's part of this discussion tonight. Do we want to completely revamp, wipe off the strategic plan priorities and just focus on this and take, you know, over the next six to nine months and have a bunch more community meetings, whatever it is? That's what you get to decide. But I want to be very realistic about what the staff resources are and what we can focus on and accomplish and what is getting backlog because of that.
Mary?
I think it's really apparent how important it is that we take our time with this. For starters, I need to make sure that I understand all of it before I can make a decision. And I want to make sure that my community understands as well. And so in order to do that, we're going to have to take the time[1791.35] And so in order to do that, we're going to have to take the time to go through the greenies and so that we can see the changes and then have a split screen and then see what the, what the coastal commission wanted us to change, what, you know, see the strikeout so we can actually see the full picture and then understand why. Like, why has the coastal commission asked us to make these changes? So I feel like there's a step missing or two for all of us to be able to understand all of the content of the suggested changes that the coastal commission has, has given to us before we even can start to talk about SRAs. I think the SRA is a whole nother beast, and I don't think that I can get there until I understand the green portions and all the changes that need to be made. So I feel like there's, there's other steps that need to be taken in, in between, if that makes any sense.
Tiger?
So first of all, to, I think it half answers one of Councilmember Bowles' concerns, but listed in the staff report is the notion of an FAQ that goes out part and parcel with case studies prior to the third meeting. I know that doesn't quite align with what you were talking about, but I think it addresses it at least partially. It's very helpful for me to understand not merely what we're working on at any given moment, whether it's housing element trees, STRs that may or may not be affect, you know, et cetera, that may or may not be affected by the timing of these meetings, but what the local coastal land use plan specifically addresses that will be delayed in terms of larger planning efforts. And I think that as a part of a third meeting, we're going to need a slightly more detailed analysis about what timelines look like with our current local coastal land use plan versus if we had an updated document in our hand. And frankly, Director Murdock is very adept at giving such analyses in fairly concise form, so I'm not worried about having that in our hand, but I think that that's imperative, that we have a very clear understanding of what planning efforts look like under an old document versus under a new document. I agree deeply with what Councilmember Beer has said about the kinds of things we need to understand. We need to be certain that something like a substantial structural modification, there is no small lingering detail that we are uncertain about on our end before we send commentary back to coastal commission. I think Mr. Lawrence has left the room, but he made a statement implying an assumption on our part about rejecting coastal commission recommendation, and I wanted to remark that it's kind of the opposite. It's that direction was given by council and then coastal commission responded, and the coastal commission response was different than the direction that had previously been given by council. And so we're now trying to respond to what we were given. Well, and this shorthand of greenies is charming. There's this term in the staff report, other potential alternatives, which largely apply to those green shaded items, which off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. But what I was hoping to see a little sooner, frankly, along with the beginning of the premise of the special resiliency areas, was what those other potential alternatives are so that we could have that discussion about the entire menu and then try to alleviate our confusion from that point and have some idea from that point what kind of meeting structure we need. Because what I don't know at this point, and what I'll begin to start to understand from meeting number three, is how much confusion is stirred up over what the other potential alternatives are, which I am not currently aware of. I'm currently aware that the special resiliency areas are one of those potential alternatives. And I think once that entire menu of potential alternatives is in front of us, that's when we'll have a clearer sense of how deep this discussion really needs to be amongst...